Okay. Thank you for joining us for the Deshues County Board of Commissioners meeting for one o'clock, Monday, August 30th, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance, if you'd please join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, presentation award from the GFOA for a budget award.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Greg Munn, County Treasurer and CFO. And we don't get to do this often enough, recognizing folks for the hard work that they do. But today we have an extra special award, and it's demonstrated by the three crowns that are up on the, the as there for you. So, and you can feel free to wear it if you'd like or not, that's okay.
Do they come with french fries? That's all I can think when I see that cardboard.
Not the first one that's asked.
Yeah, okay, good.
So normally, we would have the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, present this award, and I wasn't able to get them to do that, either in person or by video. So you get me.
No, no, not about that.
So I'll, I'll present it. So just in terms of background, the GFOA established the, there's two pieces here today, not just one. Distinguished Budget Presentation Awards Program in 1984 to encourage and assist the state and local governments to prepare budget documents at the very highest quality that reflect both guidelines established by the National Advisory Council on State and Local Budgeting and the GFOA's best practice, practices on budgeting, and then to recognize individual governments that succeed in achieving that goal. There's over 1,600 governments, including states, cities, counties, special districts, school districts, and more, that have been recognized for transparency in budgeting. To earn the recognition, budget documents must meet program criteria and excel as a policy document, financial plan, operations guide, and communication tool. So one is notice that the county has earned the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award this year, or every year since 2008, 2009, when we did our first, when we completed our first program budget. I guess nobody's around, well, Tom and, Tom would have been, when it used to be a line item budget, and then in '08, '09, we went to a program budget, and have won the award ever since then. And we were recently notified that they, we were also awarded for the FY 2021 budget document. That's the one that, year that we just passed. And they send us a little medallion, this goes on the plaque that's sitting out in front of your offices. But wait, there's more. So the county also participates in two other programs sponsored by GFOA. One is the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Report, which evaluates our audited financial or audited financial report, known as the Annual Consolidated Financial Report. The acronym is ACFER, you'll start hearing that more and more now, the ACFER, against a state of national criteria for government finance reporting. The other is the Popular Annual Financial Report, or PAFR, we talked about that, which recognizes local governments for using the information in their ACFER to produce a high-quality financial report specifically designed to be readily accessible and easily understood to the general public and other interested parties without a background in public finance. So as a result of receiving all three, we were awarded this year this triple crown. So we've got this little crown on top here, you'll see that. And just for demonstration purposes, y'all know that this is our annual budget, this is, I don't know, it's like 310 pages? Dan knows, because Dan just finished and submitted our 22 budget to GFOA. So that's the budget document, that's the planning document we work, we use going forward. This is our annual financial report, that's more of a look back, it looks at our financial records in the past, our performance in the past, there's a lot of input from our auditor. So this is our look back, say, how did we do? That also receives award. And then the popular report, super thin, but lots of pictures and graphics, they really take the high-level information out of the ACFER and synthesize it down into something that's easily read. The goal here is that somebody could flip through here in a few minutes, get a general idea of what's going on with the county financially. So those are those three. So with that, I would like to recognize a couple of folks, Dan Emerson and Whitney Hale here. So they were both instrumental, they've been instrumental in the last couple of years in terms of putting the budget document together. Whitney also participates heavily in the development of the proposed budget. So most of the narrative, I'm going to say maybe all of the narrative that comes through, she's responsible for and packages that all up. So she's a big piece of that. But also, I'd like to recognize the, the rest of the team that had to do with the other two reports, the PAFR and the ACFER, which is why we got the triple clown, triple clown, crown designation. And that includes James Wood, Cam Sparks, Casey Harden, and of course, Dan and Whitney as well.
Mm-hmm. Good. It's amazing going through the budgeting process, that document evolves for six months at a time as it's created, gets adopted, and then published, and what a great, just encyclopedia of everything that's happening in the county, because when you, when you map the dollars to the services, that's where it happens. And then taking a look back, I always think of the ACFER, I guess we're changing the name a little bit on that. The 10-year and 20-year trends in there, you know, there's a whole section on, every year, there's a data point added to some trends, which is so interesting. And then that short document to be able to hand to people, there's, you know, discussion sometimes, like for us as elected officials, well, what's the scope of a, an organization like that, you know? And you start to talk hundreds of millions of dollars, and then how much is public safety or health, or the internal services opposed to the enterprise funds? So it just breaks out some of those parts and pieces in a real high level. So all three are very valuable. So thank you so much for, for doing that, and congratulations on qualifying again this year. Anybody? And Commissioner Dares missed numbers, so.
Well, I was thinking of pictures, actually. I was thinking it's really important that the people that are behind this amazing, outstanding crown work deserve, should have their picture taken and be given out, you know, as a press release and everything. So definitely, perhaps Whitney can grab some photos.
Here we can get Whitney in a photo.
Yeah.
That would be the goal. Great.
And I'd just say that if you, if you want to know what your, what, what your government cares about and it is prioritizing, you don't listen to what politicians say, you look at where the dollars are going. So thank you for helping to maintain that transparency so that people can understand what kind of important investments we're making with county funds.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner?
Yes.
If I could say a couple words. So I'm delighted that we're able to recognize these folks here today who don't get the recognition that they deserve for everything that they do. Dan and Whitney get a little bit of visibility during the Budget Committee process each year, but for the folks who are involved in the CAFR, you know, outside of the Audit Committee, they don't. But just the skill and the patience for everybody to put together those enormous documents and accurately is, is incredible. So I just, I'm thrilled that they're able to get a little bit of public love today for all the work that they do.
Congratulations.
We should definitely have a photo op with these crowns.
Yes.
I do want to note that Casey Harden, she's also on our team, but she's from Rhodey Man.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go. Congratulations. Okay, congratulations. Look at that monster.
Yeah.
There you go. There you go. That's kind of inside. Why we didn't smile?
I'm telling your eyes.
Yeah. There we go. I think you.
Well, great optics, though, where did you find these? Oh, yeah, did they?
French fries. No water.
Nice touch.
What are the shakes you get in there? Call them.
These glasses are. Don't get too far away.
Something in the walls.
Thank you.
That's exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I knew it. It's not big enough.
Item number two is Treasury and Finance Report for July 31st, so the end of one month and a new fiscal year.
Brand-new fiscal year. Again, Commissioners for the record, Greg Munn, County Treasurer and CFO, the agenda item here is to present the county's financial report, the regular monthly financial report we do about this time every month. The report that is in front of you is for actual activity compared to budget for, through the month, for the fiscal year through the month of July. So again, as Commissioner Devone noted, or notified that this is one month of the fiscal year, we'll have 11 more of these. All right, so let's start off with Treasury and Investments. The portfolio balance at the end of the month is 236 million. This is down 7 million from last month, and that's a normal reduction without any other puts or takes in the portfolio of just operating expenses. So that, that's normal. And it is $39 million more than at the same time last year, so year-to-date. So it's, it's higher there, and the reason for that is just normal growth in the county, plus the big piece is the receipt of the ARPA funds back in May. So those are sitting in the portfolio as well. All of the portfolio categories, municipal debt, corporate notes, US Treasuries, et cetera, are within policy limits, with the exception of the LGIP. And again, that's one that we've been working down after we received the $19 million first tranche of ARPA, have been investing that slowly over time. I can tell you that as of the, so it's slightly above now, but it's less than what it was last month, and as of tomorrow, it will be underneath the pool limit. So next time, or this time next month, you'll see that number under that 51177 number. Investment income for the month is about $144,000. This is slightly less than last month's number, which was, it's about $4,000 less, but it's significantly less than last year. It's 146,000. It's about half of what it was last year at this time. In terms of yield, the overall pool for the current month, for July, is earning 71 basis points. That's down from 75 basis points the month before, and 78 basis points the month before that. So you can see a little bit of a transition. Most of our funds, or a fair amount of our funds, are in the local government investment pool, and that rate that they pay us dropped from 60 to 55. So as we progress forward, I expect until rates start to rise again, and that this will slowly start to, this will slowly continue to decline. And a couple benchmarks there, the 24-month Treasury, 19 basis points is what it's paying. What's interesting about that is last month it was 25, the month before that it was 16. So as things begin to stabilize, I think we'll see this sort of flatten out a little bit more, but as the economy and monetary policy, they're working those together to help get us out of this, the economic impact of the pandemic, we'll see those probably bounce around a little bit. The portfolio, the average term in the portfolio is 1.86 years, which is underneath our two-year policy limit, and that's up slightly from last month, 1.74 years. All right, if you flip the page, don't have a lot to say on the graphics here, they pretty much tell the story themselves. And what I mentioned last month, and I'll just mention it briefly right now, if you look at that center graphic, the three-year portfolio balance, you'll notice that in May, there, May of '21, that that blue line kicks up, and then it starts to decline for the next two months. Well, that little uptick in that blue line is the result of that first tranche of ARPA. And you can see how that compares with the prior two years. The portfolio balance tends to follow, it falls very much a pattern year after year. The next page is a summary of our investment portfolio. If you're interested, you can compare purchases that we made in July of 2021, which are in blue, compared to those that we made last July. One that I would just point out, and this is just a demonstration of the decline in the yield that we're able to get, is the top gray line there that was purchased July of 2020, and it has a yield to maturity of 2.89%. And if you go down and look at these items in blue, they're somewhere between probably 40 basis points and 55 basis points, so significantly less.
We don't have a good highlighting, because there's a scanned and then reprinted.
Okay.
But.
So the one at the very top, the first one, Portland, Oregon, Urban Renewal. If you scan to the fourth column from the right-hand side, you'll see that number of 2.895.
Okay, so, yeah.
And then just for comparison.
About the 20 with one down from the top of the page.
Yep, that's about right, first one.
Yeah.
And then if you drop down another six or seven, you'll see that the, the next highlighted one is 4308, .4308.
Yep.
All right, if you flip the page to the FTE, or the Position Control Summary, so a couple comments here is, if you look at the very bottom center column, it's, has the filled and unfilled amounts of FTEs, if you summarize, if you add those two together, you come up with 1,154 FTE, which is the amount that was included in the adopted budget. From this report, from the budget to this report, there's been no change in staffing. The 10% unfilled is higher than normal, usually we're running around 6%, but that has to do with the fact that there are brand-new FTEs coming on in the budget that we just haven't had time to fill yet. So typically, what happens is that'll work its way through the system in the next couple of months, and we'll get back down to that 6%, 5% to 7% number.
Greg, the fact that Health Services is at 55.47, how many of those are new positions that are vacant? Do we know?
Oh, Health Services. Well, most of the FTEs that were approved in the budget, I think, were in Health Services. So I don't know how much of the 55 are budgets, but the new positions that were approved during the budget was 39, and most of those were Health. But they always tend to run with a higher number, Health does.
Right. Okay.
Greg, before we go too far, going back to this page with the, these investments, and you were talking, you were essentially talking about municipal, I believe those were municipal bonds, or that we've invested into, is, is one of the takeaways from, from this page, that if we wanted to borrow money to, to do some kind of large capital project right now, it would be a good time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Just trying to like.
Yep.
You know, reverse the logic on that. See where it goes.
That's a, that's a good observation, definitely. Okay, I'm going to flip to, I don't, I actually don't have page numbers here, but I want to give you a quick comparison on the general fund, so if you flip forward a few pages and find the Budget to Actuals report on the general fund, it'll say General Fund, Fund 101 at the top. So.
Just a page 20 in our packet.
Okay, thank you. So actual revenues, resources to date, if that first block, if you look underneath the actuals column, is 1,394,000. That's the revenue we received in the general fund to date, which is 3%. So just to give you some comparative information, that number last year at the same time was almost identical, it was 1,411,000. This year's revenue tracking is very similar to last year's, at least for the first month. If you slide down the column, down to expenses, you'll find a number under Requirements of 1,472. That's the amount of expense for the month of July, that's 7% of the total budget, which again, if we're looking at that compared to the 8.3%, which is at the top of the page, representing 1/12 of the year, it gives you some gauge of where we're at. That number last year at this time was, again, very, very similar, it was, we had spent 1,533, $1,533,000 in July of 2020. So a little bit less revenue, slightly a little bit less revenue coming in in the general fund in July this year compared to last year, and also less expenses. And just for one more point, if you slide all the way down to the end of the, to the bottom there, you'll see an ending fund balance projected of, or actuals at this point, of 12.5 million. Again, lots, lots of changes between now and the end of the year, but that's just a fixed point in time, at the end of July, 12.5 million. That number last year was 12.1 million. Really, it's just perspective, how is this month with very little data input compared to something in the past? If you flip over, see, 20, 21, 22, I think, go to page 22, which should be the TRT, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So a point here I want to make is, and you already know this, because you've seen the reports from Judy, is the revenue line for room tax, find that number underneath Actuals of 1,422, that's 41% more than the same month last year. So significant increase in room tax, even just this, even this summer. So we'll be tracking that, and I'll come back once we get some more trends, and I'll give you some more information on where we think that's going for the year.
The number.
Did you say it was 41% more? Or, wow, okay.
So last July, our collections last July, collection was 1,600, 1,006, 1 million. This year, 1,422.
Okay, so Judy's number on her report, unless I brought the wrong one, I've got him, and so, in 6:03, and this ends in 5:67.
Is that the only difference?
Right. Yeah, it says 1,422, 6:03 on the report.
Yep, and there could be a couple of rounding differences by the time they reconcile it all in unison, yep.
Okay, I just thought it was teeny, but a difference.
Yep. We actually put that in there to see if you'll ask the question.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Greg. I was paying attention, yeah, I couldn't believe it, 40, up 41%.
It's in cash basis, so I mean, if you check it one day and then the next day, it could just be that kind of number, too.
Could be, yeah. Yeah, it's only a few dollars off. All right, if you flip to the next page, this is a new fund, this is the ARPA fund, which we are now showing you in the financials. We didn't incorporate it in last year because at the very end of the year. But the activity that we are working through in the ARPA proposals and all those fundings will eventually manifest themselves in this report here. So we'll be able to watch that as we go, too.
And a note on that, so the requirements section talks about the four, four parts, so the services disproportionately impacted, infrastructure, public health, negative economic impact. So, I mean, that's, it's a good way to kind of ground ourselves and to think of it as those four areas, because we talk about the, kind of the buckets, or the, you know, the, the fund amount that we intend on investing in some area. It's a real good way to map it right back to this spreadsheet.
Yeah, and we were very intentional about being careful about setting this up moving forward so that we could report it back in a couple of different ways, primarily in setting us up to put it, to be able to file the reports required by US Treasury, which in fact, goes out tomorrow. But we just, or actually, we just submitted it today.
Great.
Our first report for ARPA. All right?
Well, another note on that, then, so NACO, National Association of Counties, sends out notes to the county commissioners around the country, and they do some of the notes, some of the bullet points, where it's, you know, make sure you have your reporting ready for ARPA and this, the different levels, and if there's different sizes of investments by the federal and the reporting requirements. Thank you for taking care of that, is my point. So some smaller counties, it's going to go right across the desk of the Commissioners, you know?
Yeah, exactly. And really, kudos to Dan Emerson, he's really dug into the details like a fine, with a fine-tooth comb.
Yeah.
And he's the one that submitted it today. All right, I lost track of the pages, but I would maybe flip five or six pages until you come up to the Annual County Fair. I want to point something out here on this page.
So Annual County Fair is 36.
There'll be two pages, one is reporting on a fiscal year basis, and the other one is on a calendar year basis.
Yep, 36 and 37, then.
Yep. So I'm looking at the calendar year basis, it has the long, vertical, shaded bar running down the middle of it. And we're not, we're not done with it yet, but based on the projections from the fair folks, if you look at that lower right-hand number, they're projecting a net for the, for this year's county fair of $429,000. Which is significant, here's a couple of data points for you. So our, our average over the last 10 years, if you exclude the non-fair year we had, the average net is $275,000. Our next best year was in 2016, where we netted $450,000. And in comparison to the 2020 fair that we didn't have, we didn't have any revenue associated with it, but we did have expenses, that, we lost 52,000 that year. So to be able to throw, literally throw the fair together at a very, very late date and pull it off as, as well as he did, and as well as that team did, it was pretty remarkable, and to be able to pull us back out. So it really sets up for some high expectations going in next year when he has, when they all have plenty of time, right?
Mm-hmm, plenty of time.
Well, I know the rodeo was full on Saturday night when I went to find a seat, so, and the parking lot was full. I was out in the dirt off a Badger, I think it was, parking, so when I went back, yeah, anyway, yeah, you know, just can't thank the association enough for all their work, and, you know, the fact that our director, Jeff Hines, really pulled a lot of numbers together, and thank you, everybody on the team that really, and in fact, I noticed there are three and a half people short with his staff right at the moment. Are we going to hear from him? Is, is he trying to fill some of those positions? Do we know?
Tom might have input on that, I don't.
Yeah, it said on the Fair Expo that they were 3.5 short.
Where that really impacts Commissioners in the maintenance crew, and it's been, he is trying to fill them. It's been awfully difficult with, it's been difficult to fill many positions this summer and spring for a variety of reasons, but yes, he is actively trying to fill them. Beyond that, he, he's also going through with HR, sort of an analysis of his office staff to sort of recast the needed skill set among the office staff there, which could result in some different positions. So he's been holding off on at least one vacancy with his, in his administrative staff, which will be done this calendar year, and should be ready heading into next year's fair, to have a sort of a reformulated team there to accomplish not only the annual fair, but all the other events that happen throughout the year.
And I do want to thank Jeff again for bringing the Columbia Circuit Finals back to Central Oregon, that's going to be in October, and really excited to have that back. I'm sure it'll be on, you know, televised on the Cowboy Channel and everything. So, yeah, it's been a lot of work, and being flexible seems to be the key to how to pull things off. Thank goodness we were able to put our music outside and. Beyond that, he, he's also going through with HR sort of analysis of his office staff to sort of re-cast the needed skill set among the office staff there, which could result in some different positions. So, he's been holding off on at least one vacancy with his, in his administrative staff, which will be done this calendar year and should be ready heading into next year's fair, to have a sort of a reformulated team there to accomplish not only the annual fair, but all the other events that happen throughout the year.
And I do want to thank Jeff again for bringing the Columbia Circuit Finals back to Central Oregon. That's going to be in October, and really excited to have that back. I'm sure it'll be on, you know, televised on the Cowboy Channel and everything. So, yeah, it's been a lot of work, and being flexible seems to be the key to how to pull things off. Thank goodness we were able to put our music outside, and, and I guess we didn't have any hurricanes go through, so that was good.
With that, thanks for the, taking a few minutes to listen to some numbers, and unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
Looks like we're good. Thank you so much.
Oh, I noticed that the, not landfill, their number, was it just like at eight or nine this time? Usually, that's an economic indicator, and I always like to point it out to our, well, solid waste is at 9%.
Are you looking at Fund 610?
Yes, I am.
So, yeah, a little bit ahead of.
Yes, and, and I actually did look at that, and it is consistent with the same month last year. It was June of 2020, or July of 2020, so I think that was, they were running the same pace last year as they are now.
So, the estimate was general, the number's a little bit different, but the estimate was there, and they were a little bit ahead of it, you're saying, same pace?
They were, they were 9% or 10% on the revenue side for one month.
Yeah, good. And we know that, I mean, that can be affected by the economy if something slows down or stops. So, even if that, that trend looks pretty nominal, it could change, you know, as the economy stops, possibly in the futures, you know, someday. I'm sure it won't, but it has. Okay, any, anything else, Commissioner?
No, that was just, I always think it's important to mention that. The economic indicator. Thank you, Greg.
Item number three, wildlife inventory update. So, thank you very much for joining us, Tanya.
Good morning. I feel like this is all moved.
Yes, good morning.
I mean.
It's afternoon. We started afternoon.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Let's try that one again. For the record, Tanya Saltzman, Senior Planner. I think I was thrown off by the angle of the table. It's moved.
Ah.
I'm here today to discuss the, the Wildlife Inventory Update Project, which, as the Board knows, has been an ongoing project that was funded by Department of Land Conservation and Development Technical Assistance Grant. This was one of two parts of the grant. So, this is, this update is meant sort of as a transition. This is kind of a presenting to the Board the Public Outreach Report, which is essentially the part that was funded by the grant, and then looking forward to transition into kind of the next steps. So, with, with the memorandum that I provided, I also provided a copy of the Public Outreach Report. So, I'll just give a very brief overview of the project itself. For this phase of the project, which is essentially, we're viewing it as a pilot project, the county engaged the public to look at updated state and federal biological data about three inventories, wildlife inventories. Mule deer winter range, elk winter range, and sensitive birds, which are considered, for the purposes of this project, golden eagles and bald eagles. And it was determined that, so the comprehensive plan includes what's called Goal 5 resources, and I'm not going to go into great detail because the Board is already aware of this, but essentially, the, the project looked at what has changed. These inventories that we have currently in the comprehensive plan are fairly out of date. So, we hired a consultant, and a wildlife biologist consultant, to engage with our federal and state agencies to determine what's changed, where, where are these habitats now?
Question, so, just terminology, when you say out of date, you know, this is just, this is the, the wildlife, the environment around Central Oregon, and, you know, it's good to take a look at a point in time. Is there any reference to best practices when you say they're out of date?
Well, to be honest.
Just a conversation, kind of.
Yeah, no, that's a very good point of clarification. I mean, what we have right now, in terms of wildlife inventories, are about 30 years old. So, one could imagine, for myriad reasons, probably the, these habitats have changed significantly, whether that's due to the, the health of the species, or development patterns, or what have you. It's not super common for counties to update these, just because of resources generally. So, we're, we're really viewing this as kind of a cutting-edge project to be able to reflect that, that new data, because in lots of land use projects and, and applications, there's been kind of allusions to the fact that things have changed, and the, the habitats are not exactly where they used to be 30 years ago. They're moving, a moving entity. It doesn't, it's not just, they were here, so therefore, they're always going to be there. So, this has presented conflicts in applications for development subsequently, and so this is why we kind of felt the need to, to update these, or begin the process of potentially.
Well, and, you know, Peter, maybe you have a comment on this, just the concept of, you know, the state comprehensive statewide planning system, part of it is wildlife surveys like this, and then is there a kind of an expectation of a 10-year or 20-year period, or anything, reason to do it at a certain time? Because I understand this is our comprehensive effort, and, and it was funded by outside dollars. So, just any thoughts on that? You know, so when we say it's old, should we have done it in the past, I guess, is my point, you know, before this time?
So, first of all, introductions. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Peter Gatawski, Planning Manager. It is a great question. The, the county, when we last did our comprehensive plan update, we had goals and policies that did underscore the importance of making sure that our wildlife inventories are up to date and accurate. Over the last decade, we have updated some inventories. One, we updated a local wetland inventory in Southern Deschutes County. Deschutes County received two grant sources to develop what, what I believe is the largest local wetland inventory in Southern Deschutes County. It's the largest, excuse me, the largest local wetland inventory in the state of Oregon. It applies to Southern Deschutes County, along Little Deschutes and Deschutes Rivers, and there was a robust public process to make that happen. The other one that the three Commissioners are aware about is, happens to be associated with sage grouse. We were, we were the only county in the 90s that had a sage grouse inventory in our sensitive bird and mammal combining zone, and as Commissioner DeBoe, you may remember, we helped spearhead an effort with other eastern Oregon counties to demonstrate why we felt like there were enough measures in place to demonstrate that sage grouse was not warranted to be on the Federal Endangered Species Act. In any event, the, the sage grouse inventories were updated for the seven affected counties, and we, we updated that, that inventory in around 2015, 2016. So, the county has always been, I think the Board has always been receptive to being aware of the importance of, of our wildlife inventories in relationship to other land use values. And this grant opportunity made itself available to us two years ago, and as Tanya noted, it's, it's an opportunity to begin the conversation about opportunities regarding how we can update these inventories, how we can do it in a, in a programmatic and systematic fashion. And right now, we're just really in the, the early process of understanding what inventories have been recently updated, to share with you where they apply and how they differ, and then begin a conversation, as noted in Tanya's memorandum, about a potential roadmap for a subsequent conversation about how the Board can consider updating these inventories or the timing of that event. But, Deschutes County is very much a leader in this effort. We have the most comprehensive wildlife inventories of any local government in Oregon.
Thank you so much. That really puts it in perspective. So, as I say, this, then, and there's, you know, some of the words in here explain how we came to these three, and, because, what, I guess I'm backtracking from all the comments from the, the feedback, and there's some interesting comments about, we should do more of this, why haven't we done this before? You know, but it's good to just have a sense of place, you know, time, and why we're doing these three and doing them now.
Yeah, that was super helpful. Peter, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner, did you?
No, I was just going to say, I noticed a lot of comments said, well, the mule deer population is going down like 10% a year. Okay, well, I know about three years ago, the mountain lion population was up to like 8,000 in the state, as someone explained to me, and, you know, it's like doubling. So, it's really, it's really kind of, it's unfortunate, we didn't do a population count of the mountain lion, too. The other day, they actually had mountain lion, three of them, well, one of them had a five-year-old boy's in its clutches, and if the mother wouldn't come out and save the boy, it's where he used to live, in Calabasas. And, yeah, they actually had three mountain lion right in that area. Now, I know we've had mountain lion in the Santa Monica Mountains forever, but, you know, if Oregon is up to 8,000 mountain lion, you know, that's a pretty significant number. And what have they done? Tanya, if you can let us know, what have they done with the number of deer tags they give a year? Have they decreased them if we're really impacting our population, the deer, the mule deer so much? Is the state still maintaining the number of deer that can be killed?
That's an excellent question.
I mean, I, I'm just really wondering, because everyone's saying, oh, yeah, the population's really going down, you know. I just saw, you know, Adele and Vaughn go by my house the other day. Usually, I see a couple of them all summer long, and I haven't. And, but the field this morning was full of, they always know when the alfalfa's been mowed, and they were all there today. They know it says no hunting on that field, and it was full.
Because it's, the archery just started.
Yeah, it's great. They know right where to go, and I think they can read, honestly, because they all go to, in town at Sisters, too.
One of the, one of the options that was put out in, in this staff memo was to bring ODF, ODF and W here to give us a presentation. The questions about, you know, what are all the factors that are causing declines in deer population? How much does predation account for that? What are we doing with, with tags and tag numbers? Those would be great questions to ask ODF and W. So, I'd, I'd personally be interested in having that follow-up presentation.
Thanks, yeah, that's a, that's a really good point. And again, I, I can only speak to the data that they provided us, but yeah, I think that is the perfect segue to say that we, that is one of the options that, that staff has put out. We could coordinate with them, and they could really give you the, the data from the horse's mouth, as it were, to explain, you know, why this is happening, what exactly is happening on the ground. The information that we have that we presented to the public for the purposes of this was kind of a, I don't want to say filtered, that's too strong of a word, but they looked, ODF and, ODFW and U.S. Fish and Wildlife, they looked at their raw data, and from that data, they developed a potential proposed inventory zone. So, it doesn't necessarily mean there's not sightings of deer or elk outside of this border, but they, they decided on an area that was essentially critical habitat. This is to maintain the species as is. It doesn't mean that other areas are not significant. It doesn't matter if, you know, we might see a deer here, but that's not included in that, that habitat that is worth exploring as an inventory. So, that's what we were just trying to get across to the public through this outreach process, just a sense of kind of where, where things are, where they used to be. And I'll just, I'll use this moment, actually. I don't know if the Commissioners have had a chance to look at our, our story map that presented this data, but I just wanted to share my screen and just show you a bit of it, just also because we think it's a really cool technology, and I think this was the perfect opportunity to kind of really share this with the public, because we did this in the online open houses. We went through it step by step, but then people at home could also play around with it and kind of paw around the maps and zoom in, and, and I thought this was a really interesting tool for outreach, especially, you know, whether we're limited in, in-person venues or not. I think this is a valuable tool that the county has really provided us the resources to move forward with. So, I'll just really briefly. And I should mention that all of the photography came from our colleagues at ODF and W. They did a great job. But this is our story map, and I'm going to just scroll down. I'm not going to read everything, I'm just going to give you a sense of what it was like, it's, to go through this. We have an overview of the project. Most importantly, I want to get to the actual maps. A little description about each of the species. I'm taking the long way to get there, so you can see the photos. So, for instance, here we have mule deer winter range. Those orange areas are the current deer winter range, which is about 315,000 acres.
But it's taking it up to almost half a million, though, isn't it?
Yeah, if we scroll down, this is showing the raw data from the, from our consultant team. Then, we come to this map. So, that contains the orange is the current, plus the blue is the proposed additional inventory. So, you can see here, the current, the current zone is about 315,000 acres. The blue, which is the new proposed, is another 188,000, which brings it to about 503,000 acres. So, the story map is a really useful tool in kind of showing this. You can also zoom in, go around, like that. It's not quite at the parcel level, because we didn't feel that was necessary precision for this level of kind of outreach, but it's a really powerful tool. So, essentially, the, the Public Outreach Report that I've provided to you provides an overview of what staff did with respect to this, the open houses and the story maps. We did an online survey that was embedded in this story map to just, just test the waters. Essentially, as, as Peter mentioned, this is kind of the first, the first step in a potential inventory update. So, we were just saying to the public, given what you see in these maps, this degree of change, how do you feel about potentially going down this, this road to update our inventories? And really largely, people were in support of it. Again, you know, the devil's in the details, of course, and there's many specifics that would have to be gone through, but we had 456 responses to our online survey, which was open for approximately a month. And of those, 92% of respondents supported using the data that we received through this process to update those inventories. And again, we don't necessarily know yet exactly what form that will take, and this is kind of why we're here today. But overwhelmingly, and you can see in a lot of those comments, that Chair DeBoeun mentioned, a lot of people were very much in support. There certainly were people who did not support it and thought that it would affect property values, or did not like additional regulations, things like that. All of those comments have been provided to the Board as part of this, this report, so you can read every single one of them. So, and, which was really helpful for us to have these open-ended questions, because, you know, we wanted to get some degree of nuance in what people were thinking, given this, this kind of scope of the data. So, the general, yeah, the general purpose of us being here is to introduce that report to you. It's a long report. It contains the, the data from the consultants and the biologists, that gets a little bit technical, contains all of the survey responses. Link to the story map, if you want to kind of play around with it on your own. And staff is proposing to come back to the Board at a future date, probably in the very near future, with a roadmap of options to potentially move forward. What would, what would inventory updates look like? This, ultimately, the inventories are contained in the comprehensive plan. It's a list that, as Peter noted, is in that document, so that's kind of where it lives. It's possible for it to be a separate project, you know, we can embark on it immediately and go through it, and it becomes an, an update to the comprehensive plan, the same way a, a text amendment or any other kind of comp plan update amendment would take place, or it can be folded in to the larger comprehensive plan update, which we've been discussing as well with the Board. So, there's, there's different ways to approach it, and staff can come back with timelines, necessary agency coordination. I should note that the, the process of updating a Goal 5 inventory is not a simple one. It's prescribed in great detail in state law. So, we would be working very closely with DLCD, with their Goal 5 experts. There's a lot of technical, technical ways that you have to kind of meet certain goals and criteria, and it's, it's, we've been in, in discussion with them, and it would be a relatively new process for them as well. So, we would definitely be forging, forging ahead with some new processes, and we're, we're excited about that. But we do want to see what the Board thinks about desired approaches and timelines and all of that. So, that is our intention, to come back with those, with those kind of options more spelled out for you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, a follow-up comment, just for context in terms of why we think a roadmap would be beneficial. Staff believes that for the Board's consideration of the timing of considering updating wildlife inventories, it's going to be important to acknowledge the types of conflicting uses that we would want input, starting with the Board, to recognize that, you know, updating wildlife inventories and maintaining economic development opportunities should not be mutually exclusive, that you could, should be able to do both. And when you update your wildlife inventories, you have to identify conflicting uses, and there may be some, we anticipate, and we would be introducing some conflicting uses that we think should continue to occur in Deschutes County, for example, related to housing. There may be other uses that, for consideration, as part of this roadmap conversation, that could be excluded for a period of time. But it's going to be paramount that, again, that the Board understands, and the public, that, again, that the board understands, and the public, whoever's watching or participating, understands that there's this, there's trade-offs and balances that have to occur. And we would want to make sure that the board was aware of the types of uses that, that staff could introduce, again, that should continue to occur in wildlife habitat areas. Those uses that could be precluded temporarily, for example, with some goals and policies. And, and then, as Tanya noted, and legal counsel can certainly attest, justifying inventories is a robust process. You have to go through what's called an economic, environmental, and social and energy consequences. We did this for the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Personal, Institutionalized Persons Act pertaining to religious assemblies in rural Deschutes County. It's, it's a robust process. You have to demonstrate as a decision-making tool how you factored in, in this case, new wildlife inventories in relationship to other values, and you do it openly and transparently. But when you're talking about three inventories at the scale that Tanya just highlighted on the story map, it's, it would be a significant task. Certainly that we're up for, up to undertaking, but it's, it's going to be important for us to have that conversation as a starting point with the board, when you're ready, for us to articulate how to align these new wildlife inventories with other priorities and goals that the board has for Deschutes County, to, again, to try to identify a pathway where wildlife inventories and other values, land use values relating to economic development, are in alignment and not mutually exclusive. You were ready a moment ago.
Oh, no, I was just, it looked like Peter was ready to say something, so I was, I was saying, come on along. I, I, as we're, as we're talking about the implications, the potential implications of these inventories, it does, one recent instance that I was just wondering whether these inventories and could have implications for was one of our airstrip, private airstrip proposals, that was sort of like on the, on the rim of the canyon of, of, of the Deschutes. And one of the constituents who contacted me with concerns about that said, well, you know, there's golden eagle nest, right? I'm not sure exactly how close, but very close to there. I mean, is that, is that the kind of use that we might expect may have some new conditions put around it based on these inventories? Or is that a possible, is that one of the possible directions that these inventories would, would go, or?
So, first of all, the, it would take, to the extent the board is ready to direct staff to update the inventory process, it'll take staff, I would say, probably anywhere between six to eight weeks minimum, to prepare the justification to update those inventories. And then you have to go through a post-acknowledgement plan amendment process, which would, which would take several months. As it pertains to development that's being considered today, and I'll exclude ourselves from the airstrip, because I want to be mindful that that's a current land use process. It, it could get appealed and ultimately find its way to the board accounting commissioners, and I, I don't want to have any kind of ex parte contact, or any kind of inject any bias to the board. But you, you evaluate an application today based on the code that's, that's, that's on the books. And there are areas in our county that don't have any wildlife area inventories, or what we would call combining zones, that have, that, that trigger the protection as it pertains to sensitive birds and mammals. And one of the reasons why we want to come back to you as part of this roadmap conversation is there would be, as part of this new inventory update, there would be tens of thousands of, of acres that would be added to Deschutes County's comprehensive plan, that could potentially be added to Deschutes County's wildlife area and sensitive bird combining zones. And it's going to be imperative for staff in collaboration with the board to identify those uses that should be precluded, and that those uses that can continue to occur, subject to the provisions of our code as it pertains to wildlife. So for those uses that are proposed today, that don't have any wildlife inventories associated with them, they're subject to what's called the goalpost rule, and you can't utilize these inventories that, that the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife have recently produced until such time as they're adopted into code. Now, there's still federal regulations that can apply to sensitive bird and mammal that is outside our process. But that gives you an idea of just the, some of the complexity and the level of coordination that needs to occur, starting with staff and the board, so that, and we've been thinking about it. So, again, I think that there, we think that there's a way, as part of initial conversation, to discuss how you can, you can continue to have economic development opportunities and be mindful of these new wildlife inventories. Certainly, one of the many reasons why our, our areas is so desirable is because of, you know, this interface between the high desert and our, and our mountainous regions. So I leave that for you, just for, as, as you contemplate the timing of, of a roadmap. Certainly, as, as noted in Tanya's memo, and Commissioner Chang, you offer, you, you acknowledge that might be something that the board is interested in. I know that Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, Corey Heath and his colleagues, would welcome a conversation to talk to you about what they've seen over the last several decades, the changes, the demands, the conflicts that are attributable to the species that, that we've identified thus far through this process.
One of the other things, we do have accessory dwelling units on rural parcels out there from the state legislature. So this is kind of a, a parallel effort, and if one, one is in place before the other one, they're, it's probably going to be affected at some point. So that could get interesting, especially the mule deer area between Bend and Redmond, kind of Tumalo, that whole area was proposed to be included. So, yeah. I mean, that's for us to kind of think through a little bit, planning commission, everybody.
I mean, I, in terms of where you would put new development out in the, you know, on the landscape in the county, I would, you know, the way that, the, the way that this new ADU policy is set up, which allows, you know, allows new, new development, but it's also very, in very close proximity to existing homes. I would think that that's the least, one of the least impactful ways we could put more units of housing out on the, on on the landscape to, to habitat, because the ADUs will be pretty close to existing homes already.
Within 100 feet, it seems pretty close. And I know that actually Representative Zika was maybe trying to move that just out of touch. So it would be interesting to know what he comes up with for revision to that legislation. I, I was wondering, there was a question on page 88 of ours, number 132. Someone made a comment about our natural rock outcroppings, and I, I do recognize that they've been here forever. But what about the juniper? Was the juniper here 100 years ago, as thick as it is in today's world? I remember hearing from someone that said, actually, the juniper has come in and expanded, but it's really, like, time-wise recently. Do you have any feedback on that, Tanya?
Unfortunately, I do not. I don't, I don't know that.
Because where I live...
Commissioner Chang's got experience in the State Department of Forestry.
Yeah. I, I learned a lot about, about the, the Western juniper invasion some years ago. And about a decade ago, we had 6 million acres of juniper across eastern Oregon, and that was up from less than a million acres a century before. So...
That's exactly what I remember. Those are better details, though.
Yeah, with, with, you know, particularly in the very early settlement days, there was, there were, you know, some really extreme cases of overgrazing, followed by fire exclusion from the landscape. And also, there, you know, there was kind of some climatic wet periods sometime in that century, and those three factors together resulted in this explosion of juniper across the landscape. So that's why, you know, that's one of the significant reasons why we have, we've seen such a decline in sagegrass populations across east, eastern Oregon in the last 100 years. But, and it's also a fuels concern. But, but, yeah, would certainly have some implications for the two ungulate species that are addressed by these wildlife inventories.
So we've got to figure out ways to use juniper, as well as all biomass on the forest floor.
Yeah, just, just to, it's, it's, it's so expensive to get it off the landscape that you'd have to find a high, high value use to, to drive that engine.
I think it burns pretty hot, though, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, but it, it, it's great firewood, but what it costs to produce that firewood versus what an average consumer is willing to pay is, there's, there's, there may be a gap there. And we may just be, need to be willing to spend money to get juniper off the landscape, to have better habitat and healthier water sheds and less fuels.
So do we have a map, then, that shows where the 106 golden eagle nests, or bald eagle nests are?
It's in the, in the story map, yes.
It is.
There are buffers, I should note, for the, for the birds. They do birds, excuse me, buffers around, I believe it's a quarter acre around...
Right. I think they said quarter, but they wanted to expand it.
Quarter mile, excuse me. Yeah. Just for sensitivity reasons, they, they try to kind of keep that a little bit buffered from the public, so people can't go and do bad things, basically. So, but, you know, we have the, we do have that data. So that is in the story map in the, in the next category. I can share that if you'd like. Would you like to look at that now, or?
I know, I have them flying over my head at my house. And my cats have survived now, six years. It's pretty amazing.
And typically, just for context for the board, the sensitive bird, and sensitive bird and mammal combining zone, really, it doesn't prohibit development, it just limits to the extent that there's a nest present and, and occupied. It limits when construction can occur. And so there, there, there's sensitive, there's a sensitivity during, this is probably the wrong term, I think when they're roosting or rearing, they're young. So, you know, occasionally, we'll, we'll see development on the rim near, near the Crooked River, you know, way up north near Smith Rock, or in the middle Deschutes section where the canyon, where it really starts to incise, where there's a nest there. And, and so a, a new dwelling would, would just need to, to temper their, their construction upon confirmation that there's, there's an active nest. And then with, with the mule deer, and, you know, the elk, as it, the elk right now is really not a limiting factor, but we've, with the mule deer that we've had, I think the board, the board is well aware of this, like with the Miller Tree Farm project, parts of the Miller Tree Farm, which are subject to Title 18, there's clustered, so they wanted to propose a, a land division. When you are in a wildlife area combining zone, it requires that you cluster. And, and the board is well aware of, of the dual design elements that went into Miller Tree Farm and other projects, but also just with Miller Tree Farm, in terms of how that project was designed to, they have to have a minimum of 65% open space. It was also designed for, to address fuel loading and, and mitigation. But that was, that's a way that the, the program has, has been structured for decades to find that appropriate balance. And, and so, you know, again, in a subsequent conversation with the board, you know, we would, we would bring you back some elements or some options, so that the board had a full understanding about those uses that we see that are quite common in our county, how they would interact or interface with a, with, with a new inventory and with, and with insertions into our wildlife and sensitive bird mammal combining zones, so that, you know, there was a greater understanding of how the code functions. Some people think that the wildlife area combining zone is a hard stop, and it's not. It's, it's really about how do you incorporate development, you know, as, I think everyone here in this room knows, we have, if you're in a wildlife area combining zone, and you're proposing a single-family dwelling, and you want to have a fence, this, the fence has to be designed so wildlife can pass through. Those are the kind of elements that, again, are, are designed to achieve, you know, more than, than one goal. It's multiple goals in terms of connectivity and, and, and opportunities for economic development, for residential development. So, again, and we're, to my knowledge, we're the only county in the state that has this kind of robust program. All the other counties have been able, for one reason or another, to rely on their resource zoning, the large parcel sizes that are typically applied in exclusive farm use and forest zone properties, that is their program to protect wildlife. We are, as, as we're all aware, quite different than, than many of our, our rural colleagues or jurisdictions in this region.
Peter, you just mentioned Smith Rock, Crooked River, and I remember we had a marijuana application in the middle of Mackenzie Canyon that had golden nests on the back of that property. And, you know, so it's definitely out by where I live. I just know that there are any nests on my, I don't think there are any nests on my property, because it's pretty flat. There are no rim rocks or anything, really. But I do see, you know, those type of birds are flying overhead all the time.
And I should just make one little note here, that, you know, these maps show ostensibly what looks like an increase. You know, you see a lot more dots in that bird map, but that doesn't mean that there's a lot more birds. And, you know, it just means there's, in this case, more nests. And they, the technology in 30 years for how they figure out where these nests are, I don't know what it is, but they, it's gotten better over the last 30 years. So the fact that we see this, you know, the blobs on the screen are much bigger and much more plentiful, that doesn't mean success in these species necessarily. It's a combination of, of data collection, technology, and what they believe is necessary to sustain these, these species at their level. So just a, and I noted that in the memo, but I think that's, that bears repeating, that, yeah, and some birds use multiple nests, and I...
I know, I had a red-tailed hawk nest right by my house in Southern California, and they would rotate, and some years, you know, they might be there two years in a row, but then they'd skip. And it was so amazing when, you know, to be there and see the babies be kicked out of the nest. It's, it's an unbelievable experience. It would have like three, two would be guarding the nest on each side, and then the one would be sitting on the, I mean, it was like a 150-tall pine tree. So it was a pretty unbelievable experience, and people would see it and go like, oh, my gosh, do you know you have a nest up there? And I go, yes. You know, so it's, I would, you know, to know that what our population actually is would be amazing to know. Have they really been, you know, diminished in the last 30 years, do you think? Do we know?
You know, I think that I, I don't feel comfortable speaking to that. I think, I think having the, the experts speak to the board directly would be the best bet on that, because I think it is, it's, it's a mix, because they, they can't always determine that, based on seeing more nests doesn't necessarily mean more success in the species. But yeah, I mean, we could have them certainly relay information back to the board, or come and report directly to give you that, that information that I don't have.
I always tell people it's so important not to use rat poison, because when they eat, you know, rats and things that have had that poison, then they, their blood can't clot. And so many people just don't seem to understand that, and I just think it's critical that you don't, you know, you don't put those birds in that kind of a situation. And, you know, it's, it's a horrible, it's a horrible way to die.
And as, as the board, anyway, as we conclude this, this element of your agenda item as part of today's regular meeting, you know, I, I want to make sure that staff's not conveying the impression that you, if the board would adopt these inventories, it, it has this sweeping effect on land use and economic development. The, the county gets to choose and gets to justify the types of uses that, that can continue to occur, that still would be in conflict with wildlife. That's just the term that the state uses. And, and that, and that even if the, the county finds that the program that we're utilizing today is a, a good template for kind of exploring how to go forward, there's still utility in having the inventory... in having the inventories adopted in the comprehensive plan for reasons that Commissioner Dare explained. I mean, if people know that there's nests in a region, regardless if there's more rigorous regulations, that's an educational tool. And that, and, and our comprehensive plan, as the board is well aware, it's not just related to wildlife, it's related to so many of the things that, that relate to land use and other public policy matters that are before the board. It's about collaboration, it's about partnerships. And when you think of wildlife, you know, there is that educational component, the work that ODOT's doing with connectivity, and recently on Highway 97, the work that the High Desert Museum does. So I leave you with that to, to just, you know, recognize that these inventories, the inventories aren't, aren't insignificant, they are, they are quite large in their new additions, but there is utility in exploring the timing of when it would be worthwhile to adopt them into our code, into our comprehensive plan. And again, a, a, a robust conversation about how land use fits in with it in terms of our regulatory framework. So I think that's, goes back to why Tanya was acknowledging, this is very much a pilot project. You know, Deschutes County finds itself, thanks to the leadership of the Board of County Commissioners, to have these kind of conversations, to figure out how to address these, these opportunities, you know. Here we are in 2021. So we're, we're very appreciative to be able to coordinate this work with the consultants, share the results with you, and then continue the conversation with the board.
So this is a DLCD Technical Assistance Grant. Is, what's the next, is there any other technical assistance grant expectations or commitments that we made? Is this the conclusion of that?
This is the conclusion of this grant cycle. We've closed that out, we've been reimbursed for that. We are actually in the process of applying for the next cycle of TA grants, although not related directly to this project. And I believe one of my colleagues is going to come before the board in the next week or so to discuss those options. But that will be a, kind of a different area completely, because DLCD, they generally kind of have focuses that they prefer, you know, every cycle, they, they like to focus on certain topics. So this, efforts that we do pertaining to wildlife inventory would not be grant-funded unless something shows up.
There's no obligation, there's no obligation for the board to do anything with the wildlife, to be frank, with the wildlife habitat inventories. The purpose of the TA grant was to, to, to single out three inventories that were noteworthy from a biological standpoint, have, share that information with the community, educate them in terms of why it's important, what it means, how it applies to the landscape. And then, now this is a step that's truly organic between staff and the Board of County Commissioners about, you know, what is the best roadmap to go forward? What is the timing? What does it mean? And we have no hard deadline or timeline to, to, to complete that work. It's just, it's an extraordinary opportunity to share this information with you, and, again, figure out what the board feels like is, is the next step to go forward.
This is a great body of knowledge to have updated, just like, just like you started off with saying, you know, this is, it was old, now it's new. You know, so we have the new data in preparation for our comprehensive plan also. So however we use it, it's still here, and it's still going to be valuable, no matter where it goes at this point. Okay.
And I, yeah, and so I, I would like to request that those follow-up presentations or discussions with, with ODFW if Commissioner Dare was expressing interest in the, in the large, large birds of prey. I mean, I, I believe that maybe the feds, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, might be the better, might, you know, we, if we want to talk about deer, we can bring ODFW in here. But if we want to talk about the birds too, it might be good to have the Federal Wildlife Agency. And I, I mean, at the same, at the same presentation, I have talked to a number of hunters who are really, were really excited that this wildlife inventory work was happening. So, yeah, I, I think it would be neat, you know, you can, we can hear from, you know, the, the, the state agency staff about what they, you know, why they think mule deer populations are in decline. But I, I think that, that the local knowledge of, you know, long-term hunters from this, this region would, would also be really valuable to hear from at that same presentation.
Probably should wait till after hunting season, because I think it's just getting started.
Fair enough.
But I mean, okay, everyone has been concerned about the fact that the mule deer population is going down, you know, how many, I've been hearing this for a couple of years now. So I would like to know, is this, is the ODFW, are they recommending to the state that are sending out the tags that they're reducing them? Or are they just leaving those numbers the same because it's state revenue? I mean, I'm just really curious, has, has there been a connection there?
There, there are many, many factors. I mean, highway collisions are really, have been a really important impact on our mule deer populations in Deschutes County. And there's been a huge amount of work done on under crossings, over crossing ideas, you know, that, some of those, some of those under crossings that they built sort of between, in the, in that kind of bend, Sun River Zone, you know, and a little farther south of Sun River, you know, they, they built like miles of fence to funnel wild, you know, funnel deer to these crossings. And those, those projects have had, have had a certain amount of success. You know, it's not, is it, is it, was that the silver bullet? No. But does that, you know, help save a certain amount, a certain number of animals and kind of hold the population at a higher level? Yeah. So, I mean, there, there are a lot of, there are a lot of things that, there are a lot of things to think about Messiah, in addition, you know, the tags, the, the road crossings, you know, predator populations, there's, their habitat, which is, you know, one of the things that this overlay, this set of overlays deals with. And it would be, I, I think it'd be really valuable to hear a more comprehensive presentation that puts kind of the, the importance of, of the habitat in perspective, the habitat and the habitat connectivity, so that we, we, we have a better sense of what, what we can do with this information to, to turn the dial and, and, you know, hopefully help us, help to slow the decline of the mule deer population. And, you know, if there's things that we can do to, to, to turn it in the other direction, that's, that's all the better.
But December or January, then, because that'll be kind of post hunting season, referring to those animals, but then, you know, just a good point in time before we do our comprehensive plan work also.
Well, on the other side of it, talking about the mountain lions, my neighbor just lost a baby alpaca. And apparently in, you know, what is it, west of town? Anyway, I thought, oh my gosh, it must have been a mountain lion, but when the trapper looked at the evidence, it was not, it was a coyote that had killed it. But people, the, you know, the owner said, oh, she'd never had lost one before. So, you know, it's always, you know, things happen.
Well, in a dry year, it's probably changing the animal behavior right now, too. I mean, this, it's very dry, there hasn't been, you know, just the natural water flow or vegetation than there has in the past. So this is probably a very different year.
Well, that's like some of the ponds around me in the farm districts have been taken out, and I know a lot of wildlife were probably drinking there. So it's, you know, what is, now they're having to, you know, go somewhere else for their water. So there, you know, there's a lot of different factors combining. But I do want to know how many, you know, have they cut the number of tags down? Because there's a lot of things out there. And if we are losing them, I hate to see that happen.
So would the board like, you mentioned December or January, I mean, would you like us to check in with, have a check-in with ODFW separately before that, or should we, would you like us to try to bundle something together, or?
Maybe, there may be some real simple public information about, like, hunting tag numbers and, and population estimates that are, you know, kind of like this, the hunter's standard information that, that isn't even extra work, it's just published information, if you want to ask about that. Because that could just be an email to us, just sharing the fact that, you know, when you talk about population or populations assumed going down, or, you know, what's the 10-year trajectory or history on this? So, yeah, it'd be interesting if there's some just standard information that's already published.
And then alternatively, or I guess concurrently, we'll come, staff will come back in a few weeks and bring back a roadmap to continue the conversation about how these inventories can be, the options for consideration in terms of how these inventories can be incorporated into our comprehensive plan, if that's, seems acceptable to the board. Okay, great. Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for our published agenda. Are there other items today? We do have executive session also. Nothing from, okay. Anything else for updates? Yeah, I don't think I have much update on, just looking at the last couple of days. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to executive session. This will be under ORS 1926602H litigation.